Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance is required by the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with its infinite justice for all.
Clerk, roll, call has been taken?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Move to adopt the agenda?
So move, Your Honor.
Motion made by Mr. Barrington?
Second.
Second by Mr. Beesaw. Any additions or corrections? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Approval of six twenty-one twenty-two common council minutes. Need a motion?
I like to motion.
Make a motion.
Mr. Groat made the motion?
Second.
Mr. Haas made second. Any additions or corrections to that? All right, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Mr. Dorsey, can we get the bills paid today?
Yep. I'd like to make a motion. We've paid the bills in the amount of seven hundred and eighty-six thousand, one hundred and thirty-four dollars and sixty-nine cents.
Motion made by Mr. Dorsey. Who seconded? Mr. Foshee. Any additions or corrections to that? All right, please cast your ballots. Motion carried ten zero. Move on to public comment? Any public comment? Going three times, any public comment? With that being none, we'll move on to standing and special committees. Mr. Barrington, can you bring us out of the gate with the Board of Public Works, please?
Okay, Board of Public Works met Tuesday, August, uh, July fifth, twenty twenty-two. Members present: Barrington, Ritchie Herter, Dorsey Haas. Council members: Mayor Herter, Bob Beesaw, Tim Roberts, Melinda Croy, Chad Wirth, Robert Garsky, Ginger Arnt, Jane Murphy, Rod, Judy Radke. Motion called order at four thirty. Motion made and seconded and approved. Motion carried. The next item, public input, there was none. Waste water treatment plant upgrade. Waste water notes were included in the packet. One addition to the wastewater notes is the public comment portion of the proposed WPDES permit, which ended June twenty-six, twenty twenty-two. Since then, the DNR has contacted Ben and the permit has been issued. Ben is going through the permit to determine if any changes need to be made and will report on these in the office meeting. The next item was update on downtown reconstruction planning efforts. Consider recommendation for construction schedule twenty twenty-two, twenty, twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four. Public Works Director memo includes a detailed overview of the downtown reconstruction plans for twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four. Mr. Hirth led off the discussion, stating that the city received a two-point-nine-million-dollar STP urban grant to assist with the project. And also noted, the city was successful in purchasing the grass lot between Lynn Tank Insurance Agency and PC and Cell Solutions. This lot, two twenty-five North Water Street, was purchased with the intention to add additional parking in downtown area. During the discussion, Mr. Hirth noted that the STP urban grant helps finance the transportation portion of North Water Street, which includes street, curb and gutter, storm sewer, sidewalk and lighting. Sanitary sewer and water are not part of the STP urban grant, but rather the responsibility of the City of New London and New London Utility. No motions were made at this time. Public Works Director and City Administrator will continue to monitor the construction schedule and update at future meetings. The next was a discussion on grass and weed complaint issues, processes and fees. The Director's memo includes a detailed summary of current processes for grass and weed complaints, along with a detailed summary of what Public Works Director envisions the grass and weed complaint process to look, will look like going forward. The memo outlines the reasons behind having set fees for non-compliance of municipal code ten point zero-three sub-five and reasons for reducing grass and weed height from twelve inches to eight. Mr. Garsky presented the weed grass height data from surrounding communities. Clintonville, eight inches, Shawno, six inches, Hopac, twelve, Greenville, ten, Hortonville, eight, Appleton, eight for residential lots. Motion made by Dorsey, seconded by Ritchie, to direct staff to create an ordinance changing municipal code ten point zero-three sub-five, reducing grass and weed heights from twelve inches to eight, and to add discuss charges for future code enforcement, abatement fee schedule, which will be brought to the next meeting. Motion carried by all. The next Director's Report, service anniversaries. Ben Gruehl, Waste Water Treatment Plant Supervisor, completed twenty-two years of service July third. Public Works has finished the storm cleanup on Tuesday, June twenty-eighth. Avon, Lima and Lion Street construction has begun. Crews are working on water line install. Future items: discuss wastewater treatment plant wages and expense for a rate study. Discussion about large item disposal services. Mr. Barrington added grease, grass and weed municipal code change. The next Public Works meeting is to be held August third, twenty twenty-two, at four forty-five, with the Park and Rec Committee follow. Motion made and seconded to adjourn. Meeting adjourned at six fifteen. Motion carried by all. Meeting, Public Works Special Meeting, Tuesday, June twenty-first, twenty twenty-two, six P.M. Members present: Barrington, Ritchie, Haas, Dorsey. Council members: Mayor Mark Herter, Bob Beesaw, Steve Groat, Tim Roberts, John Foshee, Melinda Croy. Others present: Judy Radke, Financial Director, Ben Gruehl, Lead Waste Water Treatment Plan Operator, Robert Garsky, Director of Public Works, Nicole Lemke, City Clerk, Chad Hirth, City Administrator. Meeting called to order at six P.M. After the Pledge of Allegiance, motion by Haas, seconded by Ritchie, to adopt the agenda, agenda carried nine zero. Radke and Gruehl discussed the sewer rate study and highlighted the department requested estimated budget provided in the agenda packet. Motion by Dorsey, seconded by Haas, to approve estimates as presented and proceed forward with sewer rate study. Motion carried nine zero. Being as there was no further business, motion by Ritchie, seconded by Dorsey, to adjourn. Motion carried ten zero. Meeting adjourned at six forty-five. And that is all I have for the next round.
Thank you, Mr. Barrington. Mr. Dorsey, you're on the clock for finance and personnel.
I lost it, one second. Finance and Personnel Committee met Wednesdays, July sixth, twenty twenty-two, at five fifteen. Members present were Dorsey, Foshee, Barrington, Roberts and Beesaw. Also present were Mayor Mark Herter, Aldermen's Ritchie, Haas, Melinda Croy, City Administrator Chad Hirth, Finance Director Judy Radke and Ann Hunt, Library Director. Meeting was called to order at five fifteen. Motion made by Barrington, seconded by Roberts to approve the amended agenda, carried nine zero. The twenty twenty-one year-end audit was presented via Zoom by Brent Nelson, CPA Audit Partner, Johnson Black and Company. Mr. Nelson and City Finance, Finance Director Radke responded to questions. Upon completions of the questions of the twenty twenty-one audit, the committee thanked Mr. Nelson and Finance Director Radke and accepted the audit. Uh, we reviewed the administrative assistant position was removed from the agenda at this time. Finance Director's monthly report was presented. Finance Director's report was discussed. There being no public comment or further business, a motion was made by Roberts and seconded by Foshee to adjourn at five thirty-seven. Next scheduling, scheduled Finance Committee meeting will be held in the council chambers on August third at five fifteen. If I bring the approval of the monthly license list?
Second. Motion been made by Mr. Dorsey, seconded by Mr. Herter for approval of the monthly license list. Please cast your ballots. That motion is also carried ten zero.
That is all I have, Your Honor.
Thank you, Mr. Dorsey. We'll lead into park and recreation with Mr. Beesaw.
Thank you, Your Honor. Park and Rec Committee met on Tuesday, July fifth. Committee members present were Beesaw, Haas, Ritchie, April Amador, citizen member, and Jim Jaeger, citizen member. Council members present were Mark Mayor Herter, Mike Barrington, Dave Dorsey, Tim Roberts, Dennis Herter and Melinda Croy. Others present were Ginger Arnt, Director of Parks and Rec, Robert Garsky, Director of Public Works, Judy Radke, Treasurer and Finance Director, Chad Hirth, City Administrator, Jane Murphy, Public Service Administrative Assistant. Meeting was called order at five twenty, approved, motion to approve by Ritchie, seconded by Jaeger, move to approve the agenda, motion carried by all. Public comment, there is none presented. Hatton Stadium Foundation request and the high, and the School District of New London request. Arnt began discussion, noting what a great job the Hatton Stadium Foundation has done in the past with redoing the field and sound system. At this time, Hatton Stadium Foundation is not actively fundraising, however, the foundation does have funds. They would like to continue to invest into the stadium. One of the projects would be working on the exterior of this stadium. The Holton Brothers Incorporated quote is included in the packet, and the foundation is requesting the split, the cost be split three ways between the city, the school district of New London and the Hatton Stadium Foundation. Total project would be approximately two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand, with each partner providing approximately eighty-four thousand. In February twenty twenty-two, the school district approached the Park and Rec Committee proposing a partnership to build a six-plex tennis court on school district grounds. Project would allow for the high school team to hold home matches. The city currently maintains two lighted courts at Pfeiffer Park, two courts at Abraham Park and four courts at Hatton Park. The Hatton Park courts will be need to be replaced. In the ten-year capital plan, there have been proposals for the courts to be on a seven-year rotating res servicing plan, with Hatton's courts having a two-hundred-thousand-dollar placeholder from the twenty eighteen assessment. However, this has not been approved by the Capital Project Committee to date considering priority list and rising costs of equipment and projects throughout the city. Arnt noted that Chair Beesaw, Councilman Roberts, Administrator Hirth and Director Arnt had a meeting with the school district representatives, continued conversations regarding the tenants' courts at the Hatton Stadium project. And the Hatton Stadium project. The conversation concluded with the group wanting to hear from Treasurer Radke to a better idea of what the city is at with the capital projects list. Financial Director Judy Radke then joined the meeting. She discussed two reports included in the packet. Number one, City of New London Road capital project estimates, and two, twenty twenty-one audit, long-term and short-term debt obligations. There was much discussion, but in looking at the long-range capital plan, the city is currently utilizing its full debt capacity in twenty twenty-three and twenty twenty-four for projects already prioritized. And because of the growing and uncertain cost to complete these projects, do not have the financial means to contribute to New London School District's tennis court project at this time. Director Arnt will speak with school district representatives. Beesaw made the motion, Ritchie seconded and moved for directing city dollars to the upkeep of Hatton Stadium at this time. Motion was carried by all. Youth sports agreement discussion. The detailed athletic facilities reservations and youth policy draft is included with the packet. Mayor Mark Herter commented, commended Arnt on the policy and fee schedule. Councilmember Dave Dorsey requested that the term "actual fee" be updated to a set fee so that the organizations can plan ahead and there is more clarity to the final proposal when requesting city staff. Director Arnt will research and define that fee and a finalized report will be brought to a future meeting and no motions were made at this time. Director's Report. Report was included in the agenda packet and reviewed by the committee. Arnt noted the Fourth of July celebration went on despite the wet conditions. She noted the fireworks equipment and the electrical board were saturated, causing issues with the show. July is National Park and recreational month. Arnt wanted to make this time to commend all park and recreational staff in the committee for their dedication to the city's parks, recreational programs and facilities. Service anniversaries, Luke Hamlin's Park and Street Superintendent, July twenty-eighth, seven years. Chairman's Report, Wolf River Cleanup is Saturday, July twenty-third, at seven o'clock at Wolf River Vote Launch. Anyone is welcome to participate. Committee members report, Jim Jaeger spoke on Taft Park, the beautiful mural and the new lighting installed by BNH. Jim also mentioned a new shelter is being added to the Taft Park yet this summer. Future agenda items: draft the final youth sports agreement facility use policy, including fees. Next Park and Rec meeting will be held on Monday, August first, directly following the Public Works Committee meeting. This will allow all committees and staff members to take part in National Night Out on Tuesday, August second. There being no further discussion, motion was made by Ritchie, seconded by Haas, move to adjourn at six thirty. Motion is carried by all.
That's all I have, Your Honor.
Thank you, Mr. Beesaw. Can you keep the train moving right into the Planning Commission?
Hey, thank you, Your Honor. Planning Commission met on Thursday, July twenty-third. The meeting was called order at five fifteen. Those in attendance were Chair Beesaw, Jason Basset, Donna Gabbert, Mayor Mark Herter and Jamie Walbrook. Others in attendance, mapping and electronic media specialist, Missy Kempin. Building inspector and zoning administrator, David Vincent, Melinda Croy, John Haas, Mike Barrington, and from the public, Kim Young, owner, seven fifteen West Millard, and Vicki Chambers, twelve oh one Nina. Eric Fowler, representing Cedar Corp. Meeting was called order at five fifteen. The group pledged and participated in the Pledge of Allegiance. A motion was made by Mayor Herter to adopt the agenda and seconded by Gabbert, carried by all. The April twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-two meeting minutes were reviewed. A motion to accept the minutes was made by Gabbert and seconded by Walbrook, carried by all. The special May seventeenth, twenty twenty-two meeting minutes were reviewed. One correction was made, which listed Mike Barrington as a finding commission member, which was not accurate. He did not attend, he did attend the meeting, however. The change was corrected and a motion was made to accept the minutes by Basset and seconded by Gabbert, carried by all. The certified survey map for Montgomery Street properties was presented by Dave Vincent. There were dialogue and questions which were addressed. Dave Vincent made a recommendation to approve the proposed CSM based on our current zoning ordinance. The proposed change will result in a non-conforming lot. Currently, there are two non-conforming lots. A motion was made by Basset to approve the CSM and seconded by Walbrook, carried by all. A zoning request for a fence to be located in the front yard at three twenty-seven North Shawno Street. Jay Basset recalled that a picket fence in the front yard was approved in October twenty twenty-one. The new proposal would be to allow the chain-linked fence to run along the south and north property lines in the front yard. No action was taken to approve the proposal. A zoning request for a fence to be located in the front yard at seven fifteen West Millard Street. Fence would extend past the front of the dwelling approximately fifteen feet into the front yard area. The proposed fence would not limit visibility for pedestrians or vehicular traffic and be located several feet inside the right-of-way. A motion was made by Walbrook to approve the front yard fence and seconded by Mayor Herter, carried by all. The next item on the agenda was an update on the comprehensive plan, which was moderated by Eric Foley with Cedar Corp. The results of the SWOT, Strength, Weakness, Opportunities and Threats was reviewed from the previous exercise. Eric also went over draft number three, Transportation, draft number five, Agricultural, Natural and Cultural Resources, and a draft for the Citizen Survey Questionnaire. Dave Vincent explained the process to designate the City of New London as the entity to perform commercial electrical inspections. Currently, the state is designated to perform this function. Mr. Vincent wanted to bring this function in-house to allow us to be a full-service inspection department. This will financially be better for our citizens, as our fees are significantly less than the state of Wisconsin. Cultural engineering will be performing these inspections, along with the inspections they are currently performing, including commercial building inspections, plumbing for both commercial and residential, and electrical inspections for residential. After some discussion, a motion was made by Mayor Herter to notify the state of our intention to designate ourselves for commercial electrical inspections. It was seconded by Basset and carried by all. Future agenda plans are continuous of comprehensive plan projects, code enforcement activities, zoning ordinance and amendments, and a proposal for adopting a new well, well had protection plan. A motion was made by Mayor Herter, seconded by Gabbert, carried by all. Meeting adjourned by Chair Beesaw at approximately seven oh two. I have a second reading for the annexation for the New London Building Supply. The second reading.
Motion been made by Mr. Beesaw. Can we get a second? By Mr. Dorsey. Any further discussion? Please cast your ballots. Motion carried ten zero.
That's all I have, Your Honor.
Thank you, Mr. Beesaw. Mr. Dorsey, you're back on the clock with economic development.
I just have the WC EDC July twenty twenty-two minimums of both memo.
Stand as read in your packets?
That is all I have, Your Honor.
Thank you, Mr. Dorsey. Move on to Committee of the Whole. Will consider a developer's agreement with SCS Swiderski for the downtown development. They, you guys have that in your packet. We just discussed that at the Committee at a Whole. Any further discussion? Can we get a motion?
So, second.
Who made the first one?
Uh, Herter.
Mr. Herter and Mr. Roberts seconded?
Yes.
Any further discussion? Please cast your ballots. Motion carried ten zero. Moving right along, minutes and reports, as stand as read in your packets. With that, we'll go to reports of officers and recent events and announcements to the public. First, I'd like to thank all staff as we celebrate their years of service anniversaries. Next is the appointments to Economic Development Tourism Commission. Will stand as read in your packets for the appointments to that. My next appointments need council approval, so we will vote on them. And I have that for the Library and Museum Board for Bill Fleese and Tina Ruckdassel. We'll get a motion and a second. Motion made by Mr. Herter, seconded by?
Second.
Who? Mr. Beesaw. Any further discussion? Please cast your ballots. Motion carried ten zero. And that is all for me. We'll move right along to City Attorney.
Well. So the reason I wanted to bring this to everyone's attention was I kind of wanted to advise the council of a change in interpretation by the city and my suggestion on the chicken, essentially our chicken ordinance or other.
Foul?
Foul, foul, uh, so there's a foul interpretation.
There you go.
That's pretty good, I think. So what happened is, is we've historically, I believe, is a city been allowing two chickens per household, regardless of what zoning classification they're in. And that has been the practice, but it's based on my interpretation of my belief in improper reading of our ordinance. The ordinance actually, the one that's cited in there, actually specifically says you can have up to two chickens in any district, but you go up and it talks about any agricultural district. So it has to be an agricultural district in order to have the chickens. So, I want you as a council to know, my opinion to the city administrator and staff is that we have to interpret our ordinances as presented and that chickens are not allowed under that ordinance. So I just want you as a council to know that we've made, we're making a change in interpretation. That said, if council wants us to scrub the ordinances and come back with an ordinance that allows for chickens in that ballpark, and I guess I'm not looking for a big discussion as to merits, pros and cons, detail stuff, because I don't think that'd be appropriate today, but I just need some sense if you as a council want us to do that. So if we're changing the opinion and interpretation, I think you need to tell us if you want us to revisit that.
Was there anything in there about a rooster, no roosters?
There's a reference to roosters in there, but it really talks about then goes down to chickens and roosters, I believe, or chickens, but that's a whole other interpretation that's way beyond my legal expertise.
All right.
I'd definitely like to see some discussion on this. I don't know, would you bring this to the Planning Commission?
Planning? Sure. I'm guessing we bring the planning.
But I wanted you to be aware that we're changing.
So what you're saying, Mr. Roberts, you'd like us to revisit the ordinance?
I would. I would like some discussion on it.
Anybody else have any further?
If I can add one part. It also then, if it's, I may, is that it also really points out that you have a pretty good municipal code, but our zoning code really needs some comprehensive revisions. There is just so many internal inconsistencies and a lot of that has to do with, um, it's old. So people made a change on one part to an issue that was presented that was legitimate, and then three years later, ten years later, a change came up that was needed to be addressed in that particular situation, but because it's so long, people weren't in a position to necessarily read A with B. And so if the position, and I know it may be expensive, but if it comes to you and you have that issue of rewriting the zoning code, this is a perfect example of, we need to revisit it. That's all I got.
So the people that have chickens right now in the city are in violation of the ordinance? And is there going to be some enforcement or?
I would struggle with telling somebody that we allowed, based upon a previous interpretation, to punish them or take away any chickens or deny, but I think any new applications that come in, I think we have to read it as it's presented.
So it sounds like we're all giving the head nod to revisit this?
We have to.
All right. It is.
See you next month.
All right, moving along to City Administrator, Mr. Hirth.
Thank you, Your Honor. First off, I'd like to report, it was an honor today to attend a groundbreaking ceremony for the Titan conveyors multimillion dollar expansion. If anybody's on Industrial Loop Road, you'll notice that they are digging up right next to their current factory and plant, and they're underway for the new expansion. It's just exciting to see the project underway, and I would like to highlight the additional growth that we're seeing in New London. From what I've been told today, they're hoping to have the new facility built and start moving in by the end of this year. And then like was read in the Planning Commission minutes, on a planning effort, the city continues work on a process for the comprehensive plan. In the near future, a survey will be coming out to try to collect public information for the comprehensive plan. So if the survey is something that anybody's interested in, you might want to promote it around, keep an eye on Facebook site, our Facebook site and our website, and we'll probably get that information out to the older persons as well, but if anybody's interested in providing that information, we will be collecting that information for our comprehensive plan in the near future. And that's all I have, Your Honor.
Thank you, Mr. Hirth. Moving along, Utility Manager, Mr. Basset.
Thank you, Your Honor. Our water crews discovered a water pumping increase on Thursday, June twenty-third. After further investigation, we determined we had a large leak on our system. Crews found the leak on Saturday out on Highway S on a sixteen-inch water main. ML Construction made that repair for us on that same day. ML Construction made that repair for us on that same day. We estimate that leak was 6 million gallons of water lost over five days. The damage to the main was a baseball-sized hole in the main. On June 24, electric crews responded to a transformer pushed off a pad out at North Point Drive. We had a breaker operate at the Northwell Mini Sub on June 26 at 2:15 AM. The operation was a 3,000 amp fault. North QuickTrip was affected as well as some other customers. They only seen a blink from a breaker operation and no cause was found. On June 27, crews found one of the Pearl Street Bridge lights broken off and laying in the river. Electric crews responded to a blown fuse on July 10 affecting 14 customers around Washington and Division Street, and the utilities has completed its PFOS testing of all wells, but well number two, due to being down for maintenance. We are waiting for those results from the DNR. The utilities filled its open line, lead lineman position. Corey Waller started employment with us on July 18. And I would also like to recognize Josh Fassbender in our water department for one year of service with the utilities. And that's all I have this evening, Your Honor.
Thank you, Mr. Basset. One, Chief of Police, Mr. Schleter, you're in the batter box.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd like to invite everyone out to our National Night Out that we're having on August 2. We'll have vehicles out there and games, probably a little bit of food. So come on down, visit us from 4:30 to 6:30, and that'll be right between City Hall and the police department. And since we're talking about chickens, I just want to get this clarified here, since we're receiving an opinion from our city attorney that they are not supposed to have chickens in here, I'm sure someone tonight will be watching and be giving us a call tomorrow complaining about their neighbors having chickens. So I'm guessing what we want to do at this point is to notify people that they currently are not allowed here. We would give warnings at that time, and then if we decided to change the ordinance at that time to allow it, we would then allow it, but if we decide not to in the future, we would issue citations for it if we needed to. Am I following you correct on this? Because I know I'm going to get a complaint tomorrow about someone having chickens in their yard, and I'm going to have to give directions to our officers because this has been kind of an ongoing thing for probably before I started working here, so 30-plus years. And if I get one neighbor complaining about chickens being illegal and the other one saying, hey, I've been allowed to, we are going to have to do something about that to make one or the other happy. And I guess it's my suggestion that we let them know that it is no longer legal for them to have them at this time. And if you guys decide to change that, then they would become legal after that point, correct?
My preference would be, I don't know if I would necessarily make a determination or tell anybody that necessarily they're in violation of our ordinance if that's how our interpretation was. I'm just saying going forward, that it's going to be reviewed by the council, so if anybody wants to make a complaint, they should put it in writing and let us know that your department's not going to make any action at this point.
Okay. Sounds good. We'll forward.
Move forward that way.
Thank you much. Thank you, Mr. Schleter. Director of Public Works, Mr. Garsky.
Thank you, Your Honor. There was a closure on 300 Block of North Water last Thursday. Contractor needed to close the street down to do a repair on a collapsed sanitary lateral for a downtown business. The work on Avon Lima and Lyon is moving along. They are a couple weeks away from completing stormwater work. Summer's construction will be in by the end of the week, and they will start on the curb and gutter and other concrete flat work. This Thursday, July 21, we'll be closing Spur Road down in between Shawno Street and Highway 45. This is for a culvert replats, replacement. It's a partial collapsing on Eastbound. So this road should only be closed for one day, and that's all I have, Your Honor.
Thank you, Mr. Garsky. Moving along, Director of Parks and Recreation, Mrs. Arnt.
Thank you, Your Honor. To reiterate what Chief Police said, we'd like to invite you out to National Night Out on August 2. The Parks and Recreation Department will be also having games and events for that from 4:30 to 6 with the police department. We are also offering a babysitting course on August 16. You can register before August 9 to reserve your spot for that. And then join us for a day at the ballpark with a field trip to the Timber Rattler Stadium. Ages 1 to 100 are welcome. We just ask that 10 and under would need a chaperone. Grass seats, a lunch, and transportation are included with the registration for that. And then just call the office to register for those programs and for accommodation information. Join us tomorrow at the Aquatic and Fitness Center for our annual water carnival. Swim is from 1:15 to 3:30, and games and activities are outside from 2 to 4. It's a $2 entry fee for all, and there's concessions available. And then the Aquatic and Fitness Center is also looking for day shift lifeguards for the 2022, 2023 school year. If you have some free time from 5:30 AM to 1:30 PM, Monday through Friday, and would like to earn some extra money and love to swim, give Jim a call at the Aquatic and Fitness Center at 982-8524. And that's all I have tonight.
Thank you, Mrs. Arnt.
Thank you.
Next up is Fire Chief, Mr. Wolfher. I do not see him in the audience. Does anybody have a report? All right, with that, we can move on to, for a motion to move into closed session for the following statutory exemptions. 19.85, subsection 1, subsection G, conferring with legal counsel for the governmental body who is rendering oral or written advice concerning strategy to be adopted by the body with respect to litigation in which it is or is likely to become involved in. And we'd like to invite the mayor, council, city attorney, city administrator, and city clerk. We get a motion?
So.
Motion made by Mr. Dorsey, who seconded? By Mr. Barrington. Any further discussion? Please cast your ballots.
Was that Dorsey or was that Roberts?
Dorsey.
Okay, it was.
Melinda. Motion carried ten zero. We'll have a short recess while we take down.